You have your microphones on. We're going to get started, please. Okay, good evening. The hour being 6:30 PM on Monday, November 11th, 2024. I'd like to call to order the Village Brookfield Board Meeting. Would everyone please join me in a pledge of allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Noah, could you please do a roll call?
Trustee Catchmark?
Here.
Trustee Kotay?
Here.
Trustee Hendricks?
Here.
Trustee Naramatsu is absent. Trustee Kahuli?
Here.
Trustee Kalusni?
Here.
And President Garvey?
Here. Thank you, Noah. Okay, we do have one item under Appointments and Presentations. There's a proclamation that I would like to read. We do these from time to time every month, and we had a special request to do this particular proclamation. And I was, I'm very happy and honored to do it. So I'd like to read the proclamation for November Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas in 2024, an estimated 66,440 people will be diagnosed with pancreatic cancer in the United States, and 51,750 of these people will die from this disease. Whereas pancreatic cancer is one of the deadliest cancers and is the third-leading cause of cancer-related deaths in the United States, as projected to become second by year 2030. Whereas pancreatic cancer is the only major cancer with a five-year relative survival rate of 11%. Whereas when symptoms of pancreatic cancer present themselves, it is generally late-stage, and 80% of pancreatic cancer patients die within the first year of their diagnosis, while 89% of pancreatic cancer patients die within the first five years. Whereas this year, there will be 2,660 new cases, and 2,100 will die from pancreatic cancer in Illinois. Whereas pancreatic cancer is the fourth-most common cause of cancer-related death in men and women across the world. And whereas an estimated 495,773 new pancreatic cancer cases were diagnosed globally in 2020. Whereas the good health and well-being of the residents of the Village of Brookfield are enhanced as a direct result of the increased awareness about pancreatic cancer and research into early detection, causes, and effective treatments. Therefore, it be resolved that I, President Garvey, and the Village Board of Trustees of the Village of Brookfield designate November 21st as World Pancreatic Cancer Day in the Village of Brookfield, proclaim this 11th day of November 2024 by myself, President Garvey. And I'd be honored to sign this. As I indicated, this was brought forward to us from a resident that lived here in town that had it's... As I read the proclamation, the statistics, you understand how serious this is. But there is a personal touch to this story, so I would ask Kim if you'd like to come forward. Kim, if you could just state your name for the record, and I know you wanted to address the board.
Yeah, my name is Kim Tuma. I'm a seven-year resident of Brookfield now. Yes, I am the one that reached out to the village about acknowledging Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Month on behalf of the Pancreatic Cancer Extra Network, or PAN-CAN, and in honor of my dad. My dad, Jerry Tuma, was in the ER with a breast tumor cake in April of last year. After a few more scans and biopsy on May 15th of 2023, he was diagnosed with stage-four pancreatic cancer. On October 30th of 2023, he passed away, surrounded by myself, my sisters, and my mom. A short history, my dad has been a type-two diabetic for as long as I can remember. He also kept his diabetes under control and had regular doctor visits. For the last five years of his life, he was actually followed by an oncologist who was keeping an eye on his liver. All of this medical attention, and his cancer was still not noticed until it was stage four. At the point of his diagnosis, he was offered only palliative care, as it was too late for surgery or anything curative. He did four rounds of the most common chemo for this cancer, which left him feeling sick and fatigued most of the time. After further scans that showed the chemo not to be working, he switched to the other chemo regimen that also did not work for him. As his liver continued to shut down from the tumor growth, the ASI got set in. Then he got sepsis, and we decided officially that his fight was over. I lost my dad five and a half months after being blindsided by the terrible news that I had never even had time to process. The fact is, I had never heard of pancreatic cancer until my dad had it. As stated in the statistics, most people are not even diagnosed until it was too late. Pancreatic cancer is the most treatment-resistant cancer there is, and most people are diagnosed when there's literally no hope left. I am currently the co-chair of the Missions Committee for the Chicago Affiliate of PAN-CAN. This mission, to spread awareness, is so important because the cases of this cancer are rising, as is the number of deaths from it. The goal is to spread awareness and raise money for research, for treatment, for a screener for early diagnosis, and for the biggest dream of all a year. I am on a personal mission to help other families not to have to struggle the way that mine has had to and add hope back into the equation. My dad was treated at Northwestern. He had amazing care and some of the best doctors that are out there. And still, his prognosis was literally 50% of people live longer than 10 months at this stage, and 50% of people don't. That's not good enough. We must have heard the phrase "quality of life versus quantity of life" at least 100 times, and in the end, he really had neither. Please join us in the effort to fight back against this horrible disease and spread awareness this month and always throughout the year. Thank you for your time so much, and thank you for the trip to Brookfield for the proclamation.
Thank you for coming forward. I know this is important to you. I know it had to be hard to get up here tonight, but I know your dad's very proud of you that you're thinking of others in your time of loss. So on behalf of myself and the Village Board, our condolences, and we will do everything we can to spread the word. This is an official proclamation and will be published. There are some people in the audience tonight that will talk about it. There might be some people watching online that will watch the meeting going forward. But thank you for helping spread the word, so.
Thank you so much.
And if I could have your helper come up here for a second, I think. We'll get you a copy of the proclamation if you want. You can contact Noah tomorrow, and I'll get an extra signed copy for you if you'd like that. We have to keep one copy, the original here, but I'll sign two copies for you if you'd like, so. All right, again, thank you. And as I indicate, you're welcome to stay, but you don't have to stay. We won't be offended if you don't, so. Noah, I'll sign this one. If you want to maybe print another one after the meeting, I'd like to get an extra one to Tim, so. Okay, now I will open up the meeting to public comments. Is there anyone on this side that would like to comment on anything? Hearing none. Anybody on this side? Oh, okay, no public comment. Move on to reports of special committees, please. Trustee Kotay.
I would like to make a motion to approve corporate warrant dated November 11th, 2024, in the amount of $1,590,858.35.
Second.
The motion was made by Trustee Kotay, second by Trustee Kalusni. Any highlights, anything you want to point?
I have nothing of note on this one.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the board about the corporate warrant? Okay, hearing none. Roll call, please.
Trustee Catchmark?
Aye.
Trustee Hendricks?
Aye.
Trustee Kahuli?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Did you ask, go for even the pass, ask for the rest of the votes? That's okay.
Trustee Kotay?
Aye.
Trustee Kalusni?
Aye.
Trustee Kotay, anything else?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. In regards to DPW, the Forestry Department's been very busy changing off the decoration throughout town, throughout the holiday season, in preparation for the upcoming holiday season. Utilities has been extremely busy with water main projects in town. And our Streets Department has been busy with keeping up with alley grading requests, the leaf pickup and the sidewalk program. And as always, if you wish to get anything to the DPW for taking, to take it, take, yeah, you know what. If you wish to get anything to DPW for them to fix, please do so through C Click Fix. It's an app that you can get on the Village website, or you can download it to your phone, and you can submit. It's the best way to get a trouble ticket or an incident response from DPW. The library has a lot of many upcoming events, so please check out their website. You can do so at the Linda Sokol Library. You can, online, or you can go there. Please visit there. If you do not have a computer, you can go there, check out a computer, but you already be there, so you don't need to check out the website if you go there. I am on a roll tonight, so please bear with me. We do have multiple food pantries in town tomorrow night. It's a Share Food, Share Love Food pantry. They are open from every Tuesday, 7:00 PM to 9:00 PM. They are always looking for help. If you wish to become something, if you wish to become part of something larger than yourself, please go check them out. They always have volunteer opportunities. Today is Veterans Day. It's always a hard day, so I have difficulty talking at these times, so I apologize ahead of time. It is Veterans Day. I'd like to thank everybody who attended today's Veterans Day. I'd like to thank all our first responders who attended, our village staff, the Village Board members who attended, and of course, DPW for preparing everything. I see Victor's in the audience. Thank you, Victor. Thank you very much. Our Forestry Department, they go out there. They make sure that the flags are not tattered in preparation and time. Thank you, Rocco. He went, Rocco went out there and made sure the other flags were taken care of, that were on the ground. They were there this morning to make sure everything was cleared up. I cannot tell you how much I appreciate it. VFW wanted to send heartfelt thank you to everything, to everybody for this. Thank you to President Garvey for speaking there today. President Garvey, you made mention of something that had me thinking all day today, which can be dangerous at times. But you said that you wanted to thank all veterans for their service, and you made mention, you're not sure if that's good enough. There could be more, and I just wanted to let you know that the thank you is always appreciated. It is always appreciated. I don't know what is enough. Every veteran is different. I'm different. We all have different opinions and different thoughts, et cetera. We're just different people. But Veterans Day and Memorial Day can be very trying times for many of us. But I was approached by a couple people today. One of them walked up to me and, you know, stuck my hand out, and she said, "No, no, no, you're getting a hug." And it was what I needed at that time, and it was very appreciated. And another person came up to me, "Oh, I'm going to hug my favorite veteran today." And I'm not recommending that you go hug random veterans, because that could be a bad thing. But for those that you know, that can come at a, on Veterans Day and Memorial Day is just a difficult time. So saying thank you and giving them the hug is more than enough. So if you ever question if that was enough, that's more than enough. I can't, I would love to go on about, oh, you get the rights and everything, all this other stuff. Exercise your rights. Don't forget to vote. You know, you know what people did for your rights. But in the end, the thank you and the hug, not of the random veteran, but the thank you and the hug is greatly appreciated and is usually needed. Because if you ask a veteran if they're doing all right, you're going to get the same response. "I'm good." They're not. I'm telling you now they're not. And so I just wanted to say that. You had a very nice speech today, President Garvey. Thank you very much for that. For those veterans that are out there, if you are struggling, 988-OPTION-1 is the best way to go around it. There are plenty of other assistance programs that you can get through the VACC. You can go to our community website here on Village Hall, I mean, on our Village website. You can go there, and that has other contacts and other links that'll get you to the VACC and other phone numbers that you can call. If you have any questions with any of that, please feel free to reach out to me. I'd be more than happy. And this is actually where I meant to say, you can go to the library and get a computer if you can't get to our website, because the library will let you have a computer, lend you a computer while you're there, and then you can go to the Village website and check out other things available to, through Cook County or the state of Illinois. And that concludes. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Trustee Kotay, and thank you for your service. And thank you for being such a wonderful advocate for the veterans. You're our liaison to all things veterans, and you do such an outstanding job of raising awareness and being, working with the VFW and the other organizations. And just speaking, it brings attention to it, and on behalf of myself and the board, we truly appreciate that for keeping it in our minds and bringing it to our attention. So thank you so much. Trustee Kahuli, Chamber of Commerce?
Yes, the Chamber would normally have met today, but they did move that to next week in honor of Veterans Day, so that people could attend other things. And so the regular meeting is next Monday at noon in the lower level of the library. They have several things going on. The biggest one coming up is the December 7th Holiday Celebration with the Kris Kringle Market next door. There'll be lots of stuff going on. Games, fun, singing. The Kris Kringle Market selling things. We'll have the trolley. There'll be the tree lighting at 6:00 PM over here at the Historical Society at the Grostale Station, different from last year. I know we've mentioned this before, but we'll keep mentioning it, so people don't congregate at the circle at 6:00 PM when wondering what's happening. So that's a little bit different this year, so we really hope to have a nice crowd, as we usually do. The 60-to-win raffle is still happening. There are two weeks left. The last one is Thursday, November 21st. These occur at Joe's Saloon every Thursday afternoon. You can follow them on Facebook. They do Facebook Live, and they always post those winners afterwards. So that is great. The first place, first raffle that's drawn wins $500, and then there's five more drawings where they each win $100. So if you didn't get in on the 60-to-win this year, you want to do it next year. It's a really great opportunity. The, we talked last meeting, I was not here, but I'm very aware, the Small Business Incubator Program. Really excited about that. We have a meeting about that this week. And the Chamber is also involved with that, so we're really excited about this opportunity to bring something new to Brookfield. And see what we can, see what kind of draw we can get and some really fun new opportunities for small business. The Chamber After Hours, the next one, location to be determined, is November 21st. Anyone is welcome to attend the Chamber meetings or these events. If you're interested and you want to meet some of our small business owners, see what's going on out there. The Board is also welcome to attend, of course. The next one is November 24th. It's Thursday evening. You can RSVP through on the Brookfieldchamber.net website, and then they will email you the location of that as well. Last but not least, we just had a ribbon cutting at Social Play, a new business here on Grand Avenue for young children to come and have some playtime while the parents can have coffee and just hang out and give their kids a nice, fun place to enjoy and to learn some socialization skills there. That is, and thank you to Trustee Hendricks for being there for that ribbon cutting. I was not able to attend that along, so thank you for being with the Chamber and for supporting the small business. And we're eager to have many more of these ribbon cuttings with some new businesses coming to Brookfield soon. And that ends my report.
Thank you, Trustee Kahuli. Trustee Hendricks, planning and zoning?
Next meeting is the 21st of November, Thursday night. Unfortunately, it's the same night as the Chamber After Hours, so you're just going to have to decide.
Thank you. Trustee Catchmark, Administration, Economic Development?
The Economic Development Commission meets next Wednesday. I will report back after that. Trustee Kahuli briefly mentioned the Small Business Incubator Program, I believe to be known as the Brookfield Shops at Progress Park. We'll keep moving ahead on that. We have an item coming up on our agenda to approve the purchase of the sheds to be used for that. The goal is to have those sheds in place by the end of the year, and then we can work on filling those sheds. Stay tuned for that. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Trustee Catchmark. Trustee Naramatsu couldn't be with us tonight with Parks and Recreation. Trustee Kalusni, Conservation and Beautification?
Yes, the Conservation Commission has not met since our last meeting, but that doesn't mean they weren't super busy. They held an electronic recycling event on November 2nd. Huge thank you to Public Works and to police for helping coordinate all of that and checking in on us throughout the day. We had about 200-plus cars come through. No lines, no waiting. Zoom right through with all of your electronics. So it was really great working with Groot on that as part of our Groot contract. I think a lot of residents got rid of their piles of TVs. They'd been hiding in their garages the last time we did it, so a little bit less things to be recycling this time, but we look forward to continuing that. Thanks again to the commissioners that were helping with that event that day. Their next meeting is going to be kind of an off-day for them, so we'll update that. But it'll be on December 3rd here at Village Hall. And then the Beautification Commission met last week, and they are, they voted on their Fall Decor Awards, which will be celebrating the spookiest and the fall-festiest houses from this fall. And then they're also starting their Winter Decor Award, which hopefully no one has their full winter decor up yet. But if you do, and you want to nominate yourself, we'll do that soon. And the deadline for submitting your nomination will be December 13th. They also prepared a tentative date for Project Nice next year, which will be a little bit later than usual, May 17th, to try and do some planting as well as some cleanup after the weather is a little bit nicer. And also, we welcomed our new Chair of the Beautification Commission after she was appointed by President Garvey, Elaine Janz. So really excited to have Elaine. I know she volunteers everywhere in town, but we're excited to have her leading the Beautification Commission for the foreseeable future here. So really excited to have her in that role. Their next meeting will not be until January, January 7th at 6:30 PM at Village Hall. That ends my report.
Thank you, Trustee Kalusni. In terms of the Solid Waste Agency and WCMC, I did attend those meetings on Wednesday, October 30th in North Riverside. Solid Waste Agency adopted their financial statements for the year-to-date. And the WCMC, we approved the fiscal year audit, which was a clean audit, as well as taking care of some other items of business, and announced the meeting schedule for the next calendar year. So with Brookfield Zoo, we continue to work with them on many important projects, including the bike trail and other things. I did receive a very nice invite from them to attend a winter appreciation evening for holiday magic, including a chance to see Santa and over a million lights and snacks. But Saturday, December 7th, there's something else going on that day. We got something better going on that day. So I thanked Jennifer for the invite, but our holiday celebration always conflicts with the kickoff of holiday magic, so I appreciate the invite. We're going to have quite a holiday celebration here, so. Thank you to the zoo for that. That ends the Reports of Special Committees. At this point, I'd entertain a motion to pass the Omnibus Agenda as listed.
So moved.
Second.
The motion was made by Trustee Kahuli, second by Trustee Catchmark. Noah, can we have a roll call, please?
Trustee Catchmark?
Aye.
Trustee Kotay?
Aye.
Trustee Hendricks?
Aye.
Trustee Kahuli?
Aye.
Trustee Kalusni?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Moving on to items under Regular Business, I'd entertain a motion to pass a resolution amending Village Code Section 14-480 concerning mobile food vendors and clarification of Section 12644 of the vacant structure certificate requirements.
So moved. Second.
The motion was made by Trustee Kalusni, second by Trustee Kahuli. Related to the food trucks, this was something we specifically discussed at a previous committee meeting about the distance from brick-and-mortar establishments where food trucks can be located in legal parking spaces. I think it was the Board's intention. We do not want to ban food trucks, but we also want to reward and support the brick-and-mortar establishments we have. So we created regulations based on discussion from the Board. Since the last meeting, there was some concern raised by members of the Chamber of Commerce and Farmers Market about some regulations that might help with them. They have vendors at some of their special events that pay to sponsor the Chamber, and they serve food, and we've had some instances of food trucks parking right next to those events. So there's an additional regulation that was put in here with suggested language from staff and the Chamber to limit the distance that food truck can be from special events on village property, village right-of-way, that type of thing. So we're asking for support of that. Any questions or comments from the Board? Okay, hearing none. Can we have a roll call, please?
Trustee Catchmark?
Aye.
Trustee Kotay?
Aye.
Trustee Hendricks?
Aye.
Trustee Kahuli?
Aye.
Trustee Kalusni?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
President Garvey, or maybe for the attorney. So when does that go into effect? Is there a certain time period, or is that into effect as of this minute?
10 days from today.
Thank you. So the next item, I'd entertain a motion to pass a resolution to enter into a lease agreement with First National Bank of Brookfield for a property located at 9200 Broadway Avenue for use as a retail incubator program.
So moved. Second.
Motion was made by Trustee Kahuli, second by Trustee Hendricks. Again, this is, as Trustee Kahuli mentioned, that we're moving forward with the incubator program. And Trustee Catchmark, as usual, First National Bank is extremely supportive of village and village initiatives like this, and they're granting us a very favorable lease for that property at the Veterans Memorial Circle for the site of this. So this formalizes that lease agreement. Questions or comments from the Board? Okay, hearing none. Roll call, please.
Trustee Catchmark?
Aye.
Trustee Kotay?
Aye.
Trustee Hendricks?
Aye.
Trustee Kahuli?
Aye.
Trustee Kalusni?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Thank you, First National Bank of Brookfield. The next item, I'd entertain a motion to pass a resolution waiving the bid requirement for the purchases of sheds at Progress Park for the Business Incubator Program.
So moved.
Second.
The motion was made by Trustee Catchmark, second by Trustee Kalusni. These are the sheds that would be used at Progress Park location for said incubator program. And staff and their research and experience with other things, there's some very specific sheds. So they're asking that we waive bids. It's a relatively small amount, but waive bids because there's a specific type of shed that we want that would work best on the property. So because we're waiving bids, it needs at least votes of four trustees to pass this. Are there any questions or comments from the Board?
Nope, that makes sense.
And we are trying to move forward this aggressively to have this up and going. I know staff's been out there doing a lot of work at the site already, so this is another thing to just get it moving along. Hearing no further questions or comments. Roll call, please.
Trustee Catchmark?
Aye.
Trustee Kotay?
Aye.
Trustee Hendricks?
Aye.
Trustee Kahuli?
Aye.
Trustee Kalusni?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. The last item, I'd entertain a motion to pass a resolution rejecting all bids for the prescribed burn at South Kiwanis Park.
So moved.
Second.
The motion was made by Trustee Kalusni, second by Trustee Kotay. We had put out for bids for a proposed burn, and the bids came in substantially over the budget amount. And so staff's recommendations is to reject all bids at this point in time. Questions or comments from the Board?
No, I think that there's a good plan moving forward. I think the new scope of work required some due diligence to put out, just put it out for bid again rather than accept the new proposal. So I think it makes sense. The Conservation Commission is in agreement as well.
Thank you, Trustee Kalusni. Any other questions or comments from the Board related to the proposed resolution? Okay, hearing none. Roll call, please.
Trustee Catchmark?
Aye.
Trustee Kotay?
Aye.
Trustee Hendricks?
Aye.
Trustee Kahuli?
Aye.
Trustee Kalusni?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. That ends the items under Regular Business. Tim, do you have anything to manage or support?
Thank you, President Garvey. Yes, a couple things to update the public on. We are wrapping up the village's busiest capital season ever. And our street program, our water main replacement program, and our lead service line program for the year are all wrapping up. On the street program, we're basically dealing now with final restoration, final sod watering work and restoration of any disturbed area. So that project or that program for 2024 is just about done. Same thing with water mains. We're dealing with generally restoration of affected areas. It's a very disruptive-type project. Has anybody who's lived on a street that's experienced water main replacements? We're all into the restoration mode with the exception of Morton Avenue and a portion of Everly. There is still some... There is still some more invasive construction work still ongoing. We hope to wrap that up prior to the end of the calendar year. On lead lines, the board was aggressive in awarding, we had very good bids this year, and so we were doing three phases of lead line replacements. I'm happy to report that 60%, 385 out of the 654 lines that we wanted to replace this year are done. That work will continue, subject to weather. If we have another winter like last winter, they'll just keep working all the way through, and we'll be able to get the restoration and all that type of things done. I want to alert the public to the existence now, we have a, we have a two-time-a-week newsletter that goes out Wednesdays and Fridays, where you can sign up through the village homepage. If you go at the village home website and go down about the middle of the page, there is a button that you can sign up for the e-newsletter, and you can get updates twice a week on all our capital projects. Finally, one project that has just recently started and will recently be completed is a new parking lot on 31st Street. This is where the old service station used to be. Village was successful in getting that property donated to us. We are now working on a parking lot, and the excavation work has already begun. The entire, not only the structure of the building, but the asphalt surface is gone, and by the end of next week, final grading will be complete, light pole foundations will be in, and framing will begin to actually pour the concrete needed for the actual parking lot, so if all goes according to plan, and it always goes according to plan, this parking lot will be open by December 1st. That concludes my report.
Myself and the dogs inspect that property every morning as we walk by it, and they're out there getting their, starting very early and getting ready to start, and it's moving along, and I really like what they did with the parkway in front of the couple of the beauty shops that are just west of that area. We had problems with people even during the construction parking on the sidewalk, and that's something, they put in some grass right there to prevent that from happening going forward. This new parking lot will provide, you know, closed parking spaces for those businesses